Welcome to the February 6, 2024 Sherborn School Committee Meeting. My name is Christine Walsh and I call this meeting to order at 5:36 PM. We are pleased to hold this open meeting at Dover Sherborn Middle School this evening and are also live streaming with DSC TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Before we jump into the formal agenda, I just want to recognize that each new year brings both hope and challenges across the world and in our own neighborhoods. If you are someone who is navigating a difficult time, please know that Sherborn stands behind you and we are here for you. I encourage all of us to reach out to each other, rely on each other, and support each other as only the Dover Sherborn communities can. Now, next on our agenda this evening is community comments. Are there any community comments in the Zoom room?
Nope.
Oh, any community comments from our friends over here? No? Okay, well then I think we're going to go right into the superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief because you've heard quite a lot from Denny and me last week. You saw that my newsletter went out earlier this week and the average view time was 12 minutes, which is good. So that's an increase, which is fantastic. So we'll continue to do our best to get those out regularly. At the end, we're a few upcoming events. So this Thursday night here at 6:30, we'll have members of the leadership team talking about restorative practices and what those look like in the world of discipline and within our schools. And then later on in March, we have some portrait of a graduate opportunities coming up. I'd like to formally recognize and thank Denny for organizing and facilitating the DESI visit last week and for those of you who participated in some way, shape, or form, the formal collection of data is over and we'll quickly get some results and feedback within a month or so. So we'll certainly keep posted as that comes in. In terms of teaching and learning, we're at the point where our teachers are undergoing their formative assessments, so checking in with their evaluators about their progress on their goals this year, student learning goals, professional practice goals, and discussing the feedback they've gotten through classroom observations. And then with the help of our Director of HR, our principals are working together to really streamline our hiring process and getting ready to launch that after February break because we'll be posting for some retirements and some, you know, potential changeovers that we want to make sure that we're all on the same page and coming at it with a strong lens and opportunity to attract the best and the brightest. And lastly, I just wanted to follow up. Kate McCarthy did a presentation on the goals program at the joint meeting last week and talked about how the goals program will be moving to Chicory based on the cohort and the needs of the kids at this time. But I just wanted to assure the committee that she and special education team at both Pine Hill and Chicory will continue to work on the recommendations from the review around adopting criteria for entrance in and out of that program, for aligning the program criteria K to 12. So what it means is students move up from one grade level to the next and focusing on inclusion opportunities so that the students who are pushing into classrooms or being included in classrooms really have a dynamic experience and that it's meaningful with teachers working together. And lastly, looking at both our academic curriculum to make sure that there's access points for all of our students as well as our SEL curriculum, just as our academics build on each other K to 12, we want our SEL skills to build as well. So lots going on in the world of special ed. Obviously, they're collaborating with our Gen Ed teachers and we will keep you posted as progress is made in that regard.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Dennis, any questions? Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Then we will go on to financial reports. Thank you.
So the first item is your approved warrants since the last meeting. Remember, the last time we met as a committee was in November, so you've got sort of a two-page listing of warrants that have been approved since your last meeting. Again, if you ever have any questions on these, feel free to reach out and we will share more detail with you. Looking at your status of appropriations as of January 31st, so this is the snapshot since the November. And the biggest piece of news that we have to share since our last meeting is regards to Circuit Breaker. So we really didn't know the final numbers when we met in November. We do know them now, so all the bold information in your report sort of highlights that Sherborn did receive a little over $500,000 in Circuit Breaker reimbursement comprised predominantly of tuition, the $446,000, but then the $68,000 in transportation reimbursement. I will say that the transportation reimbursement that we have received or been approved to date represents 57% of eligible transportation costs, knowing that it's mandated at 75%. So it was less than we received last year. So I think that's going to be the piece that fluctuates from year to year versus the tuition that used to fluctuate from year to year. So with transportation built in, it's always that we're going to get 75% of tuition costs. So I think that will be a firm number for us going forward and what will fluctuate, obviously, is the transportation. There is, I was on a DESI call, there is some speculation that when we get our final fourth quarter Circuit Breaker payment, we may see a little bit more in transportation costs. And there's always that where we weren't getting full mandated reimbursement at the time of the published amounts. We always potentially get a little bit more in that fourth quarter, but you don't know that until actually the first week of July when you get that fourth quarter payment. But that was good news for us. So based on that, we, it's helped relieve a little bit of the over-budget situation that we have in out-of-district. So we moved $100,000 of out-of-district tuition that was in your general fund over to Circuit Breaker. And so now we're just looking at managing about $100,000 deficit in the general fund. So it, some of it could be covered by some excess that we might have in the in-district. Some of it could be, hopefully go down and hopefully not go up if we have any placement changes during the year. And I know there are some placement changes that are being discussed right now. Some would be beneficial to us. So we won't really know that final number really till the end of the year, but I feel much more comfortable that we can manage what we have and not have to ask the town for additional appropriations like we had to do last year. Because using the 420 to date leaves us about $95,000 in the Circuit Breaker fund. So that will give us coverage if we have some continued unexpected placements or if we need to move more of the operating fund over. So I think knowing that safety net, we should probably hopefully be good, break even for fiscal year '24. So that was really the only piece of news on your seventh appropriations. Everything else is operating based on what's already been reported or on budget.
Thank you so much, Dawn. Any questions?
The second part of that report actually gets into the cooling study and we can discuss that when we get to the action item.
Excellent. And then discussion items, proposed FY '25 budget.
Yes. So I did give you hard copies, if you'd like to update your notebooks of the budget package version 2.0 pieces of information. So with what was discussed at the joint meeting on Tuesday night about the movement of the goals program, obviously it has an impact on your budget. So looking at the in-district, we're looking at the transfer of one goal educator to Chicory. So that will come out of your budget and then be put into Dover's. And looking at sort of the goals reorganization and what students Sherborn has that's moving to the program, that resulted in a reduction of four EAs in Sherborn's budget. Keep it in mind that some of those EAs will then be moved over to Chicory. So that is good on your in-district, almost a little under $200,000 reduction. But keep in mind, on the out-of-district side, you do have students going out of district over to Chicory. And so when we looked at our projected placements for fiscal year '25, those students are now incorporated into that number. But the good news is, with some of the other pieces of information that we gathered, we are seeing, even with the addition of the two students who are going over to Chicory, we're seeing a net reduction in our budgeted tuition costs of about $56,000. And now that we have a better feel how Circuit Breaker is going to look, we increased our use of Circuit Breaker by $75,000. So now instead of the 300, we're using $375,000 worth of Circuit Breaker. So obviously, that's money that you're still going to experience in your budgets, just where it sits. So we're, we're able to say we have got Circuit Breaker reimbursement to cover $75,000 additional funds, funding of tuition out of district. So the other piece of information while we're on out-of-district is I gave you a version 2.0 of sort of the projections. And so you can see the role forward in that we, if you looked at your version 1.0, we were not anticipating any graduations or aged out. And so that's actually what's sort of causing or causing some of that change and that even though we're adding two students into the mix and actually we're adding three placements from where we discussed in November, we are still looking at a net reduction in out-of-district. So your previous version 1.0 had 11 placements and we're now looking at 13. But the composition of those placements is less than what we thought in November with the, with the 13, I'm sorry, with the 11. So that's good news. And I can just show you that you could increase, there's varying levels of expense for the out-of-district. So even though we added three and took one away, you are seeing an overall reduction. With using the $375,000, I just wanted to point out that then that leaves us with a safety net of about $55,000. And we just sort, we sort of do a sort of a very preliminary calculation of anticipated Circuit Breaker. It's much more complicated when you fill out your Circuit Breaker reimbursement files. And so this is a range that we've come up with. It's, it's not going to be a perfect, but it gives you an estimate. But using the 375 is about 85% of our total expected Circuit Breaker reimbursement for tuition cost only. And that leaves us about $55,000 of reserve plus whatever we get on transportation. So you can see we've got about $68,000 in transportation. That, I think, is what a comfortable number is for us to have because you can see that the last two years, a lot happens and it's nice to be able to have a place to go draw upon so that we are not, one, putting extra pressure on the budget and also, two, asking the town for additional funds. So with that, we're looking at a reduction from version 1.0 to version 2.0 of a little over $300,000. And that brings us to a proposed increase of just about 4% versus the 8% that was in version 1.0. So we're, a part of it is the movement of the program, but that still has an impact on your budget, which is a positive thing. And Dover will then be picking up that expense, but their out-of-district is actually gonna, then bringing students back in is almost going to net them out. So it actually was a win-win, I think, for both, for both districts.
That's great. Thank you so much. And as, as the goals program kind of refines their guidelines in terms of who can receive the, the great support, do we think these numbers will change significantly?
So there, there might be some refinement in related services, but given the number of students that we're talking about, it might be like a .1 or a .2. And if anything, it's going to be relief in Sherborn's budget and a move to Dover's budget. So I don't see that being picked up. And if you potentially have other students identified that could be going over there, right now, you know, when you tuition in a student, it's your per pupil cost. So you know how you, we usually have you approve the per pupil cost. It's like in the mid $20,000. So that's actually what potentially, that plus transportation would be the impact to Sherborn. As you can see, they're so much more cost-effective to keep a student in our, our own districts than if it went to truly out-of-district. So if there's, if there's one or two students that fluctuate that way, again, we've got reserves in our out-of-district that would, that would cover that.
And then with the goals program, as the needs of our children, you know, change over time, will the different guidelines also change to meet the needs of the children in terms of what we define as, or what the goals program defines as being applicable for services and for support this year? You know, what if the needs in three years look different from the needs of this year? Will those guidelines change and evolve?
They certainly could to some extent. Right now, the way that the goals program is being reinvented is to look at students with intellectual needs, who, students who have autism and students who have developmental delay, which even within those three categories, there's pretty broad terms in terms of who might qualify. If there are other students who come along with different needs, we can see if their needs can be met within that program or perhaps we need to think about something else. But I do know that Kate McCarthy and the team are doing their best to identify the students who fit the current criteria, but also students who no longer fit the current criteria, really trying to include them in the Gen Ed classroom with as much support as possible so they can feel really a part of their, their classmate and their community.
That's great.
And do we anticipate that the current staffing that we, that we're planning for next year will support all of those needs, whether it's additional needs in the Gen Pop classroom and Gen Ed?
Yes, yes, yes. So one teacher is moving with the students over to Chicory and one is staying to help the students who no longer qualify to be, to have that actual support.
That's great.
Yeah. And additional EAs are staying from the program too. So there, there is staff that's remaining to cover the students that didn't really, shouldn't have been in the program because they don't meet the criteria, but still need support.
And it's good news. They get to move to a less restrictive environment.
Exactly, yeah. It's a very positive move from that perspective. We do anticipate probably having one or two additional budget adjustments in your version 3.0 on March 12th. We're going to look closer at the math curriculum. We won't have a decision by that point, but we will be able to probably more effectively look at the cost of the two. And then we've also been looking at other funding sources to maybe help offset what we've added to the general fund. Remember, when we build your first budget, we throw it all in there because we don't know what's going to happen. So we're hoping that we might be able to refine that number a little bit and there'll be an adjustment for that. And then again, if we find out any additional out-of-district changes or placement information, we will also reflect that. And then at that point, then our budget is sort of done when you vote on it on March 12th. And then anything else that happens after that is going to be a post-budget situation. But we'll do the best we can to accumulate, acquire, decipher all the information that we have up until March 12th and bring that forward at that time, present it to you, and then we'll open your open hearing for the public and do a more formal presentation of your budget at that point, which then after the conclusion of that, any additional discussion you have at that point, then we would vote the final budget and move it on to the town for all the various meetings that are documented in your memo.
Any questions? Any questions, Dennis?
Nope. I appreciate that.
Dawn, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Pine Hill Principal Hiring Update.
Sure. So as you know, Allison Gullins, who is the current Assistant Principal, is named the sole finalist for the principalship. Two weeks ago at this point, she went through a series of interviews with students, with teachers, with the leadership team, with parents and community members. Everybody had the opportunity to provide feedback, which I have been reading and processing. The reason, you know, the rationale for having chosen her as the sole finalist is, if you take a look at the work that she's done with Dr. Brown over the last six years, she's really had a six-year-long interview. And Dr. Brown has been so gracious in not only mentoring Allison, but also giving her opportunities to be the co-leader. So while we often think of an assistant principal as someone who might work with students in discipline or buses, Allison has really had an opportunity to take on big projects that normally are associated with the principalship. She's do, done teacher evaluations. She's run hiring committees with teachers. She's developed professional development opportunities and facilitated them for teachers. The Innovative Seating Grant that we did K to 12, Allison was spearheading that for the entire district. She was Mr. Conklin's left-hand person on the website redesign. And she's also done a ton with MTSS and WIN. So I felt confident that she's demonstrated she has skills. I just wanted to give the community an opportunity to ask questions about her further vision for Pine Hill and to explain the things that we all get to see, what the community doesn't necessarily. So I'm still going through that feedback. So far, it's excellent and very supportive. Just like all leaders, there are certainly places for growth and we'll take that into consideration and make sure that she has the support moving forward. So I plan to make a formal decision later this week. And should the decision be that Allison will take on the principalship, then she and Mr. Conklin will be launching a search, a full search for an assistant principal starting after February break. So they'll potentially post the position next week, let the resume start coming in and then launch a committee to review and bring in people to interview. So that's the plan.
Very exciting. Dennis and I had the pleasure of going to the kind of meet and greet after all-school meeting a few weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago now. And it was really amazing to see how much Allison has done behind the scenes that isn't all like, you know, fun and games. It's just making sure that everything is systemized and she's, she seems to be very interested in data-driven results, ensuring that we're tracking and we're really looking at the outcomes of different things. And I was so happy to know that on that day when the school went into lockdown, like the third day of school this year, it was Allison who was at the helm because Dr. Brown was out of office that day. And, and I didn't know that. And it was such a seamless experience for our kids as much as it could be, and she was at the helm. So it was just, it was really great to learn all about what she's doing behind the curtains. Are there any questions about that? Okay. So in your packets, we're moving on to the first read of the Medco representative to the school committee. We talked about this at the last meeting. Just an outline of the policy is in your packet. Well, read it, digest it, and vote on it maybe next meeting, probably. But did anybody have any questions about that today? No? Okay, great. This is a great, easy meeting. Nobody has anything that they need to ask. Action Items, the Pine Hill HVAC Engineering Study Update.
Yeah, so we're really excited. I think hopefully you had an opportunity to read the report from the engineer. As I said in the memo, this is their, sort of their initial report. We had an opportunity with our working group to actually have a discussion meeting with the engineers and talk through the report. Some of the feedback that we discussed actually in version 1.0, you're actually seeing version 2.0 because we refined some of the points that were discussed. So obviously, they looked at it in pieces, which was great, right? So you can look at what it would be to sort of both proper ventilation, not proper ventilation, but more humidity-related ventilation and air conditioning in the classroom space versus the larger spaces in the building. So not knowing exactly where we are, because we're still waiting to get the building assessment for looking at the sort of longevity of Pine Hill life in general. There, with the timeframe and the expense that potentially there is, there does make, it does make sense to attack some of the larger areas in Pine Hill to provide more controlled air spaces. And that would be both humidity and the, and the cooling. So even on some of those days where you might not need air conditioning, just having the humidification is going to have a benefit. So it's one of those where we've got some placeholders. They gave us some ranges. One key thing that has come across since our first meeting, I gave them additional sort of information about our electrical capacity. We do have existing electrical capacity in the building to facilitate the addition of these three spaces, so there would be no added cost on the electrical upgrade. So in the first report, it said we weren't sure. And you'll see now in the report, it actually says you have enough electrical upgrade to accommodate the larger spaces that you're thinking about doing. The other thing we had them break out was the, they have a cafeteria and the kitchen lumped together. We traditionally don't air-condition kitchens. It's just competing with the ovens and the equipment in there. None of our kitchens are actually air-conditioned, so we had them split that out. So with that, talking to the working group again, which includes school and town administrator and representatives, we thought we would see if we could gain momentum and move forward with the three larger spaces, so the cafeteria, the auditorium, and the library. We took the high end of the range for those three areas, added 30% because they told us there were soft costs that aren't built into their numbers yet and are bringing forward a placeholder tonight of $375,000 for you guys to approve so we can continue the discussions with the town and the capital budget committee. It's not something that we'd be able to have done this summer. As you can see throughout the report, they're like, there's just, the market is still very difficult and a long lead time for HVAC equipment. And I can verify that because of the work that we're currently doing here at the region. And there's a lot of work that we would have to do. So you still have to do the design phase, do the bidding phase. So if we can get some money earmarked and that the town is comfortable moving this forward, we can start doing that work and have it up and ready to go for the following summer. So that is sort of what we're hoping to do. It's, it's nice to actually have a, we talk about this a lot. Ever since I've been here, we've talked about it. So it's nice to actually have a report from an engineer that gives us options that we have some ability to move forward with. And even if you say, they say the building is end of its life and we need to look at doing a new building, that's probably an eight-to-10-year process when it's all said and done. And we would still be able to benefit, I think, from doing these, these upgrades. So any questions on the report itself?
I don't know anything about HVAC.
Yeah.
Just putting it out there. Why is the gym not part of this equation?
We, actually, none of our gyms are air-conditioned either.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, again, the gym's not, you know, that's not a space that we deem, like Chicory Gym is not air-conditioned. Our gyms here are not air-conditioned. So I don't, that space is not worth for us to air-condition the gym.
And is the, is CES the company that potentially do this work or are they just a consulting firm?
They are an engineering firm. So they are a subcontractor of our architect study on the building assessment, but they would do all the design work for us. I mean, we could bring them on. We wouldn't have to necessarily use them, but typically they've already invested in us. So we would have them do the design work.
Yep.
They do a cost estimate with that design work and then they move on and do the specs. And then they go on and help us with the bidding process. And then they would go on and help us with the project management.
That was my question. But there will be a bidding process and get lots of different, okay.
Yes, yep. We have to, we have to bid it.
State ones, yeah.
Yeah, for, for procurement reasons. So it would be, but then they put together the bid package for us with all the specs.
And are we required to take the lowest bid?
Yeah. Unless there's some reason why, you know, you can disqualify if it doesn't look that they have the experience.
Okay.
And they do that, they would do that evaluation for us as well because they have that expertise, not us.
Excellent. Okay. It's exciting.
So Dennis, any feedback from your end as being our member?
No. I think Dawn has been fantastic in Sherborn and the service, so thank you for that summary. I think just thinking about this and reflecting on the decision to, you know, condition at least some of the space, it's sort of a different approach than what was used certainly at Chicory. We've kind of looked at, and I talked to the folks that were involved in that process and they kind of went along and did the whole thing. I think given some of the points that Dawn raised, we're starting to think more long-term of the building and what all that means, taking sort of a stepwise approach in smaller chunks, I think it's probably something that is easier or more straightforward for us to discuss with the town because it's something that we can go out for, for a vote through town meeting or whatnot. So there's still sort of a fair bit of work that has to be done on the town side of things in addition to all of those project steps that you mentioned.
Yeah, so if we make the decision that Pine Hill is worth maintaining and we might do some major renovations, then that's where we would incorporate in the two big pieces that they talk about for ventilation and air conditioning for the classrooms in general. As you can see, that was like a $2 million project. So that would be something that if we say, okay, this building has the bones and the structure and meets our needs for space, and we're just going to bring it up a little bit by renovations, and that piece would be worked into that along with like, you know, renovating bathrooms and bringing everything else up to sort of more to date. And so that, that's a huge investment. That's where we would need electrical upgrades. And so that's a much bigger piece to bite off. I do think in the, if you think about the days that we have the issue, a couple in the beginning and a couple at the end, by bringing in spaces that are completely truly air-conditioned. by bringing in spaces that are completely truly air-conditioned and not just the ones we're renting, we should be able to bring some relief to that building and have a much better learning environment for that building. The library, we had actually tried to see if there's anything we can do because about two years ago, we replaced the RTU that was up on the Learning Center, which was the old computer lab, which they're, they're like, well, I don't know why you did that. I'm like, well, it used to be a computer lab. That's the only reason why that space is air-conditioned. It's not a computer lab anymore, but that's what it was. We looked to see if there was any way that we could put a little bit of a bigger unit and cover the library, but that's not as easy. So this is a little bit more of a, a larger look at it by doing the library. But if you think about doing the library, keep those doors closed in that space, you are going to get some relief to the classrooms. And that is where we see our highest temperatures. And then if you think about the kindergarten wing already has the window units. And then you've got the larger spaces that groups can rotate through. And you'll get some relief, you know, just from the larger, the auditorium and the cafeteria, you have lunch. So I feel like that would help us sort of transition during those couple of days where it's uncomfortable. Again, we'd have one more year where we probably would go ahead and rent again and it just provides some relief based on what that forecast looks like. But there would be at least a plan, if we can get this in motion, to have some relief the year after. So Jeremy, the town administrator, as I said, has actually been on our working committee. And he did do a brief, I think, explanation for this to the capital committee, either of you guys on the cap, and also to the select board when they were reviewing capital projects. So they have heard a little bit about this. Dennis or myself did not attend because at that point, we had brought it forward to school committee. And so the plan was if you approve it tonight, then we'll go on the roadshow for those groups and see, you know, what forward progress we can do, knowing that they don't have to come up with the money this year, but just sort of give us the, the thought that there, there is support for it that would get approved in next year's. And we may need to come up with, and maybe it's something that we can cover from the building fund, but just the cost to do all the pre-work. But given the cost of this project, that piece shouldn't be that expensive. So it could be that we could allocate funds from the building fund to cover the design, the specs, and get us ready to go out to bid.
And from your conversations about those meetings, was there general support in town? Do you anticipate this?
I think there is general support. I think they're just grappling with how much is being asked for capital and prioritizing across the town.
Got it.
And prioritizing. And so that's where, you know, I think we can see if there's any way we can collaboratively help funding, you know, we do charge rent to Sheeta. And Sheeta is a big part of that auditorium and cafeteria. And so there could be, I'm thinking of my, like some kind of surcharge on that. And then maybe we can help cover a little bit out of the building fund if we put more rent into the building fund. So I think we can be creative with trying to at least fund maybe a piece of it that would look at, make it a little more palatable to the town. So once we have firmer numbers, again, this report gives us baseline, but it's not really where we're going to end up. They did try to go on the high side because they are seeing very volatile pricing with these types of pieces of equipment. And again, I can verify that. So it's nice that I've got this other project because I, what they're saying totally is matching with what I'm seeing in the real world. So I think that that's why we went to the high end. We added the 30%. But the great news that I just got on Friday was that our electrical was going to be, would suffice for adding this and there would be no additional cost on the electrical side.
Dawn, thank you so much for doing all this work. And thank you very much for doing this incredible work for our kids. Should we vote on this? Okay, wonderful. Could I have a motion, please, to approve a $375,000 placeholder to move forward with the Pine Hill HVAC consideration?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Could I have a second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing no discussion, the vote is accepted, so moved.
We need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you did a roll call because he's.
Yes. Okay. Can we have a roll call? Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Becca.
Becca Hammond, yes.
And Kristen.
Kristen Aberley, yes.
And Christine Walsh, yes.
Thank you. We'll keep you updated.
Thank you so much. I know.
It's so exciting.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have the minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes? Are there any edits that they, you'd like to make to the November 14th, 2023 minutes, meeting minutes?
No edits.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the meeting of November 14th?
Actually, you're going to do the whole consent agenda. So also throw in there the tuition for next year.
Okay, great. Do this. Can we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the November 14th meeting as well as the approval of the preschool tuition?
I have one question about the preschool tuition, if that's okay. How does this compare to other?
Yes, they do do a market, they do do a market request for area preschools. And we're always, we always make sure we're in line with that. Yeah.
With other preschools within the elementary schools, correct, versus private school preschools?
We really look at the preschools in this area because this preschool is for, so this, if you're coming to this preschool, you're coming as just a general ed student to be peers with our special ed students. So we want to make sure that we're competitive with people's selections for where they would go to preschool in our area.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 14th meeting as well as the pre-K tuition?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Can I have a second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
All in favor?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Becca Hammond, yes.
Kristen Aberley, yes.
Christine Walsh, yes. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, so they're approved. And then in our packet, we have some informational items, the wonderful Pine Hill newsletters, the Pine Hill pages, which are fascinating, as well as the Dover School Committee Minutes and the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee Meeting Minutes. If there are any items for March 12th meeting, feel free to forward them to our chair, Dennis Quan. And is there any other business tonight? Okay, since there is no other business, I would appreciate a motion to adjourn.
Becca Hammond, so moved.
And a second?
Kristen Aberley, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Becca Hammond, yes.
Kristen Aberley, yes.
And Christine Walsh, yes. The meeting has concluded at 6:14. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Dennis.
Enjoy Texas.
Thanks for sharing.
It's only five o'clock.
All right. Have a good night, guys. Thank you.